You value your head for me? Please, Lord, thank you for the day and the opportunity for us to come together for the business of our district, be with us in all that we do that is benefit of our district, and be a blessing to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I guess nobody wants to talk, so we can move on to the information items.
The only thing we have on information items is accounts payable. If there's any discussion or question there, we can look at that.
Okay. You know? Everybody's good? All right, number five?
I was concerned.
Adams? All right, can I just look over this real quick? Can I get a motion for approval of consent items?
I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir, if you need to.
Look at the tax collections. We had a very good month of June that helped us catch up, so that our collection rate for this year of the current year in Levy as of June 30th was 97.16 percent, whereas last year was 95.83 percent. We collected about $145,000 in the month of June.
And that's what you said. Can I get a motion for approval of consent items? Patty, second to ours? You hip hop?
No, no.
That's fine, but I can do so.
Motion made.
Mel, take up Patty.
Okay, so who is this?
Second to ours. Okay. All in favor?
Are you feeling that, aren't you?
All in favor? There we go. Any opposed? All right, we're unanimous?
That's your circle.
Paul's never secretary before, so he's had it.
The motion is made.
All right, now we're on discussion items.
Okay, uh, was this bad? Oh, I thought somebody had something to say. Sorry.
You're saying nothing about me, or anything?
We do have preliminary scores in, and I put those in the packet. I just wanted to show everybody. Usually Shelley will go over that. She's out today because I had to take her grandson to the doctor in Houston. But anyway, the preliminary results are in. You can see, and those will change before we start school with the ending of all the EOCs and the other testing. Areas in here, there are some areas that we certainly want to address and are addressing, working with principals now and building the plans on addressing some of the areas that we want to improve in. Again, comparatively, if you look across our area, we again are very strong in most all of these areas. Again, you know, there are some areas when we look at eighth grade social studies and some of the fifth grade scores we want to improve. So the principals are working, as I said, on a plan now to address those areas and to get them up as much as possible. If you notice that the state scores, we don't have that in Algebra I, but most, all of the others, we have state scores. We will not have the end, the final state score until later, though. But anyway, you can see that our EOCs are looking where they need to be in many areas. We do want to see our English II come up, English I, but you also see the state scores, the state average in that too, which is kind of hard to figure out how the state developed these tests without the same difficulty level across the board on every test, because it doesn't make sense. If you look, for example, just look at U.S. history. They're at the very bottom of the EOC. Ninety-four percent passing rate in the state of Texas. But then you look at some of the English and even some of the elementary scores across the state, the state average. So the difficulty level of each test is not the same, and I don't think they'll ever get there.
And I don't know how you can.
Yeah, yeah, but with their setup now, it won't happen. You're right. But anyway, these scores come into play when we're working on hiring too during the summer, which we have been working on that drastically. So anyway, we'll answer any questions or discussions or anything you would like to about the scores at this point. And we'll also have a finalized report when everything's finalized yesterday.
I do have a couple of questions. It's been a while since I've seen these kinds of reports, and back in the day, it was TASS or TAST or whatever. They keep changing the acronyms. I have two questions. In the past, third grade, let's just say reading, third grade reading this year was testing second grade reading from the year before, which sometimes you have simply cohort groups that do better or not. And that's really not a fair, to compare this year, third grade reading to last year's third grade reading, it's not the same group of kids.
This year's fourth grade compared to last year's third grade.
Would be a fairer comparison of progress. Is that still true?
That is still true to a certain extent, yes.
Except for the complexity of the test may not be the same from second to third to fourth.
And you know that that's the problem across the state is the difficulty level of the, say, math test is not the same in the third grade as it is the fourth grade. And it kind of hinders school districts from really pinpointing some of those things because of that. And there again, there are different expectations from the state. You know, on a third grade test, you may have to get, you know, 25 questions correct. On the fourth grade test, you may have to get 28 questions correct. So it's just, it is so complicated at this point on all of their tracking that...
So passing might not be 70.
You're right, yeah.
It's almost as complex as the tax curve.
So, you know, what we understand as a passing test, as a passing grade 70, it might not be. It'll be above or below.
Right, and on one, it may be a 70, and on another grade level, it may not be a 70. Yeah, that's right.
And then another comment I just wanted to make, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is when you compare our results this year compared to the states, we're above in most categories. There were five that were lower, and those were slightly lower, just, you know, one or two points at the most. So to me, okay, that's, we're doing good. You do that same comparison to our scores from last year, and there were 12 categories that we were lower, almost as if, wow, we had a really good year last year. And so again, did the test change from last year to this year? So, okay, that's really not a fair comparison.
And all we can do on our comparisons, showing from one year to the next, and do cohort grouping, so that you see what the third graders did as third graders, this year's fourth graders, this is what they did, and so on.
One last comment that I'd like to make, and I'm sure this is a true statement, but I'd like to encourage, in the past, sometimes when you are, oh my gosh, we need to get our social studies tests up, there's almost a pool of resources and energy towards that to the detriment of some other areas.
I agree.
I hope that does not happen.
No, I agree with you. And you see that, you see that happen a lot with math and science, you know? But I agree, you don't want to do an overkill and then hurt you in another area, that's for sure. And like the social studies, that's not an area, we are going to make some changes there. We're going to change some personnel around, but we're not going to have a wholesale change where it's going to hurt us in some of our technical areas. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on Star Test? All right, who are the goals?
Okay, last board meeting, we said something about, hey, bring the goals and that type of thing back so we can all look at them. And I want this...
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. So on this, I want to give you a copy of the instrument that will be used this year that all of you adopted. And also, in here, there are goals in each area. Now, the goals that the board adopted at a later date to add to this, that's the ones Andre had. Andre still has those, so she's out on the sand somewhere. So we will bring those to the next board meeting, because that is a part of this thing. We want it to be a part of this, because that's what we're going to be looking at. This will be addressed orderly at a board meeting, all of these areas, especially the areas that you guys came up with. That's what we're going to look at addressing. But I did want to give you this part of it, because those other goals that this board developed will be a part of this and fit in these areas some way.
This is the exact wording and policy right here?
Yes.
What is our first quarterly update?
We'll go quarters from this month, so probably October.
So we should expect in October, an update.
So, so we're doing things partly with this when Andre gets back?
Well, we're just going to get her to give us that list of goals that y'all developed and we put it to them here.
Yeah, it's just an addendum.
Yeah, it becomes a part of that.
Anything else on superintendent goals? All right, long range, please.
Okay, on the, what I did, you know, we had done some long-range plans before, and this, what I did is just put a copy, a simple copy of what was on that plan. All of the details are not on there, but I want to talk about that a little bit. But this is what we came up with as a board, as far as facilities improvement plans. You can see that some of these are off. We've knocked those off. Number one there is in the process. Number two, we've knocked that off. Number four, we've knocked that off. Number five, we've done that, but that's an ongoing process, because when we've repaired that, it's going to have to be done again. And then number six was the overlay. So, you know, Rusty had an idea of maybe getting a committee of board members together to look at this, and myself, to look at it and kind of map out some long-range plans and bring it to the board. And then from there, the second step would be after that, it would be mine and Kevin's chore, of course, like we did on this other, go out and get the price of all of these items that we're looking at, the timeframe and the steps that it would take to get there. So Tony, that's kind of where we, you know, open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I just thought that there were some things that we spoke about, and, you know, I guess the best interest of everybody would be able to really think about it and come together with a plan and have everybody, you know, fully in on it, have Stacy in there. And that would give us a plan, a chance to look at an aerial view of the district and to think about, you know, maybe some different types of ideas and then wants and needs and...
Are you wanting a committee of just board members, or a committee that includes principals, or a committee of community, or what are your thoughts?
Well, with Stacy being able to be a part of it, I was hoping he would, you know, basically kind of be the voice of the principals. I was hoping for a board member committee, but it's, I'm hoping whatever.
You're not necessarily asking for...
I think if we do a community committee, you're talking about opening up a big can of worms.
That's what I'm asking.
Whatever.
Sorry.
How long does this process take off?
And we can do it like we did with the goals.
Yeah, and it's basically what I'm talking about.
That's why I just could try to get clarity of what you're asking for.
Not personal discussions up here and be able to kind of sit down and, you know...
But have a committee, get together, come together, come up with some ideas, bring them back to the board, and let the board decide which ones we want to further investigate the price tag on.
That's right.
And you want to be on that committee?
I would like to be on this.
All right. Patty, would you like to be on that committee?
If you need me to.
Dr. Moore, Chad?
Only if you need me to. You got, that's three of them.
Now, can I say one thing?
Think about, just think about, I don't even know if it's feasible, moving the ag farm from way out on the other side of the world and get it back over here on our campus. I don't even know if that's possible, some way, somehow, and bring it up to a standard to where we can be proud of it.
Actually, can I rephrase? I would serve if needed. However, I really feel that I am inadequately in tune with the broader community.
You haven't had tickets yet, have you?
Yeah, and so in that sense, you know, when you said, well, you didn't want to have a committee of community members, in a sense, you really are by having board members.
Absolutely, yes.
And so, you know, when you get, someone say, hey, man, why don't you do this? That's a good thing. You can filter it through knowing our limitations and our, you know...
Well, that's why I want Stacy to be a part of it.
Yeah, so, and what you just said, you know, I never even thought of, and that's a kind of thing.
Well, I didn't even know financially if it's possible.
Well, it would seem, that's why.
Exactly.
I was like, you need to down when I'm bidding. I could lay a little leg to the ground. Hey. All right, how about we do this? I know Rusty wants to be on it. I'm good with being on it.
I mean, Andre would.
Andre would be good on there, and she knows how to bid a bid as well as anybody. So me, Rusty, and Andrea, well, obviously, any feedback that we get from the other board members, it's welcome, but me, Andrea, and Rusty will put together and come up with some ideas that we can bring to the board. August or September? Stacy, does it matter whether we meet or when we bring it to the board? Not a committee meeting, when we put it on the board agenda.
Oh, yes, September.
That's what I figured. Okay, so it'll be on the September agenda.
Can we kind of just discuss, could you kind of reiterate where we're at on the demo that we're in?
That's what I was fixing to ask.
Could we do anything to make it that? Yeah, Kevin had, in fact, it's on my desk, the RFQs, you know, ask, or I put it out in the paper, and ask for RFQs for all the bids to come in and that kind of thing. So there's just a couple of details left on that, and it's ready to go. You know, I think I said something to you about something going to the paper, and that wasn't that. That was the, that was for our hearing for the, no, our hearing for the...
For their budget.
For the budget here.
Okay, yeah, I was just hoping that we could speed that process a little bit.
I keep waiting to see...
It's ready.
We just got to get it.
And the other thing, the slowest part is looking at the dates, trying to plug in dates, because you have to have all the dates established and listed. So trying to dance around every, all of the other activities, you know, is okay, but it's got to be done. But I don't know if we, it could be as early as this week that we get that done, if not, it'd be next week, so, because it's completed except for some dates on there.
Would that require a special call board meeting, or no, that's already been approved? Just pull the trigger and go with it?
Yeah, just, yeah. Yeah, just to go ahead and send out, but you have to advertise it in the newspaper and that kind of thing, and they have so many days to respond, you have to give them so much time. And then you have a meeting with them and that type of thing, so.
All right, so me, Rusty, and Andrea? We'll make sure. There's a committee? There wasn't, there wasn't an action item?
I got that.
And it's C video, just...
It's not an action item, I know.
So here we are, first action item is discuss approved bid on student athletic insurance.
Okay, Kevin, if you would go ahead and check that one, please.
Thanks, sir. We decided to go out for bids this year for student accident insurance. We've been with the same company. This will be our fifth year with them, and the last bid we got was actually two years ago, because they gave us a two-year freeze on the premium. Went out and advertised in newspaper, and we got three people that came back in with quotes for us. I was with a group that we've had for the last several years, there's a couple Brokerage Store that we get access to through Gentry Financial Group. We have Charles Farmer that represents Texas Kids First, and Marion Turner that represents Texas Student Resources. Their bids were all close together money-wise. The big thing that I looked at and I went over with Coach Sharp was that the length of time that before the initial treatment of an injury would be covered, one policy only gave you 60 days, another policy gave you 90 days, and the one that we have gives you up to 180 days before the injury is first treated and it will still cover it. There were some other minor differences with Coach Sharp, and I will, after discussing with him, believe that the current policy that we have, which the premium stays the same again, and they also guarantee it for two years, is what the brokerage has. And that would be my recommendation that the board approve going with the Brokerage Store for our student accident insurance for 2017, '18, and '18, '19.
All right, can I get a motion? Dr. Moore, Chad? Get a second? Rusty? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, update?
Okay, I'm sure that y'all looked at the update, and that's probably the smallest update I've seen in 14 years, so there's not a whole lot to it. If you look at, well, in going through, what they did on the first one is just they eliminated all of the EFA and just reworded it and put in different policy, different areas, all they did. And the other changes, things like in PHDB, it said examination shall assist students' mastery, they changed that to say board-approved examination, so, which we already knew that anyway, but they're just cleaning up some verbiage in here. In one area, where it's talking about district requires completion, two credits in addition to number, it said required by the state, now they cross that out and say mandated by the state. So that's, that's the changes we're looking at. They also, in former policy, EIF Local, they had Commissioner of Education capitalized, and they marked that out and wrote it where it was not capitalized. Then the final one is about charters, which, as you know, doesn't affect us, but we do leave it in there in case there was a charter to happen to pop up here. But again, all, you know, one change in there is if they're wanting to fill out an application and petition for a charter, it said turn it into the superintendent or designated office. They changed that out and put Central Administration Office. Those are the changes in this whole thing, and, you know, like I said, probably the shortest one I've seen in 14 years, which is pretty good. Now, your next ones will not be, since we had a session, those updates are going to be lengthy, and that's why it's always good to have the notes on that, that they'll be very lengthy updates.
So recommendations?
Our recommendation is to approve update 108.
Can I get a motion? Dr. Moore, Chad, a second? Patty? All in favor? Again, that's all right. And Foundation, memo of understanding?
Okay, as you know, we've been working on developing the education foundation, and it is at this point organized and developed group, and the only thing that we need to do, you need to do as a board, is to approve the MOU, which basically spells out how the school board and the foundation board will work together. It's all about working to do what's best for kids, to enhance the classroom teaching, and to do more for kids than what the general budget will do. And if you read the memo of understanding, that is exactly what it's talking about throughout. The MOU was again covered by the foundation board, and they, in fact, will sign after this board approves the MOU. Our next meeting will be August 7th. Isn't that right, Misty? August 7th. So anyway, any questions or anything like that, I'll be glad to answer. This is just the agreement with the two boards saying they are working together.
Dr. Moore?
And on page two, under Big B commitment, it refers to the district agrees to continue to provide the following in A or one, a portion of the salary and benefits of the employee of the district serving the foundation. Is this over and above their salary that they're receiving as employee of the district? Is there, in other words, does the foundation pay a stipend or extra money for the services that the school employee is providing to the foundation?
At this point, no. But at a later point, once the foundation is established, then the chances of that happening are greater.
My foundation has zero money.
Yeah, but I mean, because we're saying that, yeah, we're going to pay a portion of the salary, and that's what I was wanting.
You're right, you're right. As the foundation is built, then generally, that's the way it works, that board will take action on having some of that payment come out of the foundation. That's the way it normally works.
And again, just, I'm not trying to nitpick, but if they're working during school hours, would they still get a stipend, or is it anticipated that foundation work would be outside of...
Right, it would be above.
Okay, okay.
Is the board aware of who the officers are, the board of the foundation? Okay, Ray Player is the president.
Ray?
Yeah, Ray's the president. She, who's the vice president?
Gina DeHoy is.
Gina DeHoy is the president, and...
Tammy Willoughby.
Tammy Willoughby, so both are vice presidents. Yeah, I started thinking for whatever reason. Anyway, Tammy Willoughby, Gina DeHoy are both co-vice presidents, and then Linda Shawn is the secretary, no, you're the secretary, she's the treasurer. Linda Shawn is the treasurer, and per policy within foundation, the superintendent serves as secretary, even though most of that gets delegated to Misty, just entitled, superintendent serves as secretary of the foundation.
Because Misty is the executive director of the foundation, but not a voting member, and Ray Player is the president.
Okay. So if you have those type of foundation questions, that's probably the people that you most likely want to ask questions to. you most likely want to ask questions to, Misty being the only paid employee on that, on that part, but also doesn't get to vote anything. So a recommendation?
Is to approve the MOU with Sabina ISD Foundation.
All right, so can I get a motion? Dr. Mortchad, in second. Rusty, is there any discussion? All in...
Who was it?
Rusty, second. All in favor? There you go, unanimous. Purchasing go up.
Okay, I know y'all have seen these before, we used to be in, have an interlocal agreement with Region Eight for food purchasing, but we went solely with Region Seven a couple of years ago. Now, Sunny's at the point of where she sees that, that Region Eight has some items that are cheaper rate, will get at a better price from Region Eight instead of Region Seven, so if we do an interlocal agreement with both Seven and Eight, then we can choose, she can choose which products to get from each. So at this point, we're only in an agreement with Seven, and she knows coming up that she's gonna have some better pricing opportunities with Region Eight, so that's why we're wanting to look to go into an interlocal agreement with Region Eight.
That's right. There are also some new federal guidelines that Sunny learned about as she was going through the, through the examination she went through this spring, that Region Eight does more of actual bidding of them, and Region Seven basically just, you're on a list, and so the Department of Ag, people wanted her to actually join Region Eight so they'll take care of that, so Sunny wouldn't have to take care of it.
Yeah, that's the thing with, you know, sometimes you see, well, I won't say anything negative about, but, yeah, some, some of their bidding processes are more thorough than what we have encountered with, with some other agencies.
All right, so a recommendation?
To approve the interlocal agreement with Region Eight.
Can I get a motion? Patty, get a second.
I'll second, put my name down.
I got this one out, you know, about four and three, I ran out.
There should be some more.
Inside here? So you got Patty, Tony? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, closed session at seven oh three. What time? Oh, three.
I'm making the board, I'll list out the names.
You can take this presented.
Are the list of names...
As to my recommendation to employees, Scott R. Shively, Ben Swain, Darren Skipper, David Neal, Lauren Kitchen.
Make a motion. Superintendent, in favor? Give a second. Patty, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Get a motion, we go home. Rusty, you get a second. Patty, dismissed at thirty-seven.
Wow, quick and easy.
That was.
But that's with super involved, too.
That's true.
Good. Okay, so this, I have your signature here.
I just signed about six things in there, too.
Okay, Yomi?
What about the committee do?
Yeah, you want to be the person to say what... Yeah, me, Rusty, and Andrea get together, that's kind of where we're going.
Yeah, let me know, so are you leaving at any time? And, and when's gonna be good?
Can't leave until everybody's hired.
You don't get a four-day...
I'll leave Friday for two weeks, I won't come back until August 1st.
I'm not gonna do it until September meeting.
That's why we're not doing it for August meeting.
Okay, yeah, so we can shoot for maybe sometime around.
Yeah.
That gives everybody time.
Yeah.
Something about it. It passes early August.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be planned, so sometime early August, we can get together.
So, okay, so the demolition stuff is basically...
There's a reserve, you know?
Yeah, because we gotta advertise it.
Right.
Now, the only thing we gotta do is set the dates when we want all of this stuff to happen.
How long, how many days are...
You have to, you have to give them...
Huh, okay.
Four weeks for all this stuff to come in, all the bids.
I can see.
And after that...
It's gonna take a while. Wouldn't take long. Since I'm not gonna have to do it, I'm not gonna beg any challenges, you know, like other people are together.
My hope right now is get it done before Christmas.
Hey, I'm telling you, y'all gonna get all...
We don't start, we don't say...
No, we're not, but I've got all the show hookings up over here.
Bye, Dr. Mortchad.
But if we hit with hurricanes and bad weather, it could drag over.
Well, that's what we don't need.
I know. I wanted to be, I wanted to be a haymaster when everybody started coming to school.
Yeah, yeah, that one, it wouldn't be done.
But...
What day is Chadbee? Is October 6th through 8th?
I believe it's the conference.
Six, October 6th through 8th?
Is that the day or is it...
I think it's a, I think it's a one week later.
You had it on your phone?
It's already on my phone.
I bet.
See, when I do an update...
Yeah, yeah, that's it, October 6th through 8th. And I, guys, I have no idea who we play that night, you know?
All right.
Tell them just to avoid them, I don't know where they're going.
Say you like...
What's on them?
I don't know.
Just tell them to avoid Chadbee, what we're saying is don't put Chadbee homecoming the same weekend.
Yeah, that's happened before, and that's not...
Pick a team.
I don't know, it's just...
I think the goddamn mills keep getting their shutters. Well, the timber, I'm playing my cops, we're away from here.
Gosh, and I'm trying to think...
I ate too much.
I did, too.
It was so good.
It was good. Man. Yeah, you know, I, when I think of those dogs, I have to pull them out. I mean, you don't have to, not gonna be much training, for sure, you know? You get one to train...
Let me just say, they weren't completely tuned when I got them.
No, you know that.
Yeah, what they tell you, what you get.
Yeah, 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 we kind of know that.
I'm not near as leery now with the pups, though, as I was before, but, you know, kind of, it's a...
Okay, y'all can have a good day.
All right, have a good week.
I'll try.
Yeah, I want you, yeah, kind of see how they act, eh?
I remember you showed me a picture of you with the feather on the pole, the string. For about fifteen people said, don't ever put this...
Ray, I'll regret what they told me, I thought.
All it is is, oh, I didn't turn that on.